We will start out, if everyone could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll move to the Administrator Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, in town of Sugar Camp, via email to town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Phylis County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Next, we move to Amendments and Approval of Agenda.
There are no amendments on the agenda this evening.
Okay, in that case, I will take a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to the minutes of the June 19th, 2024 Regular Meeting. Any changes?
No, not since they were posted.
Okay. If there are no issues by the Board members, I'll take a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 19th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Five zero. Next, we move to the Treasurer's Report.
I will make a motion to approve the checks dated June 13th, 2024 through July 9th, 2024 for accounts payable checks number 232400320 and check number 2324004341 and regular checks number 129831, check number 129935, and manual checks number 5699 and check number 5717 in the amount of $763,382. And ACH payroll checks numbering 900043228 and check number 900043400 and regular payroll checks number 59369 and 59370 in the amount of $262,791 or excuse me, $709.41 for a total amount of $1,026,182.31.
Motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of them?
I have a question. Their check number 129828 is showing as a negative, is not listed. Was that a... just wondering if that was a credit or a void?
That was a void.
A void, okay.
Yep. Yeah, it is listed as avoided on her meeting sheet.
Okay.
I can look into it if you want to know exactly why it was avoided.
Nope, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure that that's all it was.
Do we need a repeat of the motion?
No, you can go ahead and call for the...
Okay. We have a motion on the table by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to Public Comments. Is there any public comments from visitors regarding our agenda items tonight? Hearing none, we will move on to Administrator's Report, the Nexus Facilities Study Update.
Okay, thought it'd be a good time to bring you up to speed so far with what is going on with our Nexus project. As I kind of typed it up, so I don't forget anything. Rob Brown has been working with Bill Foster from School Perceptions to develop the survey for our community stakeholders. We talked before about what that survey would look like. The plan right now is to test several areas, what Rob has told us referred to as the bucket areas, to help us identify our comprehensive study needs and to deserve and determine the interest and the desire and possible opposition for further consideration. Two items of the Sugar Camp Gym and the Three Lakes Athletic Fields. Those two are going to be tested alone, not part of Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School, because they are a little bit different than some of the educational equity spaces and safety spaces. Although we see them as a potential need, we just want to make sure we have a really clear understanding as to what our community would be feeling. The purpose of the survey is to understand what our community sees as wants versus needs. The survey will be shared with the Board for you to review and approve before we seek the input of the community. This is by our request. If you recall, Rob Brown had talked about potentially just doing the survey, but we felt that as a group here, and correct me if I'm wrong, we wanted to have a good first blush at it before we decided what went out. We don't want any perception that we're asking for something that we don't support as the Board member sitting at the table. I did get a message from Rob this afternoon that stated he has the survey rough draft already completed, and he and I are going to meet next week, early in the week, to talk about what that would look like. Then he brought up again that he would like to be here probably next month. I think that would be appropriate to go over the survey with you, talk it through, get your feelings on it and your guidance. He reminded me that historically, they've had community task force meetings before the survey goes out. And again, I tried to clarify that, and what he said was you would often get a group of stakeholders together to look at that survey, tour each of the buildings, and talk that through before you would send it out to the larger group. That is something that is up to us to make that determination, and I put that out there because I think you may want to discuss that a little bit further when Rob is here on site. We had some pretty strong feelings about, again, we don't want it to come off that we are dictating what needs to be done, but we also want a very clear understanding as to the purposes of why things are done. He said generally, when you do have a task force, there'd be three evenings of work. One would be focused at Sugar Camp, one would be focused at Three Lakes, and then one would be when the results come back from the survey, they would look at the data analysis too before the Board would make a decision. I have a little bit of a timeline here. Currently, the survey's in development. In August, Rob Brown would like to be here and share the survey. I mentioned the consideration of the task force. In September, then, we would want to finalize that survey. We'd be looking at the survey going out, right now I'm thinking in early to mid-October. Gives us time to get that information back and processed. November and December, one of those months, then the Board would have the opportunity to review the data and decide where you want to go forward with that, if you want to go forward with that. Are we sticking to a truly comprehensive facilities plan that we're going to manage in-house and we're not looking for additional funding? Or are we going to put it out for a question, which we would have to propose a resolution that would be Board-approved? Should we be looking at a capital referendum for some of the projects? That would be scheduled to happen in April. And that's a great big question mark, because we're all at that point of we need the information before we would commit to that one way or the other. Again, I reminded Nexus, because that's what I feel my duty is, and they're very clear on it. We never signed up with them saying we are absolutely going to a referendum. We signed up with them because we knew we could get the comprehensive study, get a good plan for five-year, 10-year, and more long-range out, and we control what we do with that information going forward. And that is where we are at. Any questions on that?
For the first part of that, when discussing the athletic fields and Sugar Camp Gym portion, is the athletic field part, is it like an all-or-nothing thing? Are there pieces?
No. What I asked him to do is make it at levels. Like, if you were talking about the facilities out here, would you support the upgrade, I'll say it, grass turf or AstroTurf? Would you support the development of concessions and restrooms? Would you support a parking lot? So we could get a feel for, you know, we're all about the restrooms and this, but we're not going to do that. So he said that there would be levels for us to really get more specific information.
Good, okay.
I think that's really important for us to know.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure.
And if the survey originally comes back to us without that, then they can go back to the drawing board and put that in there, but we've been quite clear about that all along.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to new business, starting with August meeting dates.
All right, just a reminder that our Board Administration Staff Retreat is scheduled for August 9th at 8:00 a.m., and we would like to use the Elementary LMC. Steve, I didn't consult with you, but I believe that would work okay yet. It is a different time change than in the past, so again, it's, I believe it's a Friday, if I am not mistaken, and we'll get started right at 8 o'clock. And then our regular Board meeting is scheduled for August 21st, 6:00 p.m., as normal. We don't need a motion, because these are both standing items.
Any issues, concerns of dates? Okay, next, we consider Approval of Personnel Report of New Hires and Resignations.
We have new hirings in Justin Lundgren, a 5'12 instrumental band teacher, Megan Ream-Brand, para-professional, she will be in the LMC and doing instructional special ed support, and Betsy Krasinski as the volleyball co-head coach. Resignation Savannah Katkaisen, who was a para-professional.
Any feedback as to why?
Why Savannah's, she needs to spend more time with her family and her home business. She not here, we left the invitation open, she's welcome to come back at any time.
Perfect. All right, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to Consider Approval of the Health Insurance Provider Security Health Plan Renewal.
Okay, I'm going to just give a brief explanation to start, and then I'm going to ask Caleb to go into the meat of the matter. I don't want you to be under the assumption that we have forgotten about it or been late in the game. We started conversations at the end of January and worked through February, and it's taken this long to actually get the information to us. We knew our costs were going to come in high, we knew that going in, and so we were looking at other opportunities. We have a very limited market in the Northwoods, as you know, as far as providers go. And because we do have some higher costs, our rates were not coming in good. We did quite a bit of negotiation, which gave us a little bit of flexibility. But the plan that we've landed on and that we're sharing with you today, I feel we're very fortunate to be even able to bring this forward at this point. It wasn't too many weeks ago Caleb and I were kind of scratching our heads going, where are we going to go? Because it was looking pretty dire. So I'm feeling good about it, I'm feeling good where we're at. There is going to be some changes for the way we have felt as far as our deductible, the out-of-pocket for the staff members, but I would like him to go into that and explain how ultimately there is not a change, it's going to be processed differently and you will, and how you will see that happen. Caleb, you want to take over from there?
Sure. So as Terry said, it was a rough year for our plan. At the time of our first renewal offer, we were running at like 119% utilization, meaning we had received, you know, more than we had actually paid in by a healthy margin. So we knew it wasn't going to be a good renewal and it wasn't, it was just under 20%, which when you take that 20%, that's about just under $500,000. I mean, if you're looking at everything added to the budget, which for our budget is just a non-starter. So we talked with our rep and we let it go another month, so we had another month of claims data, because they're always working a few months behind. And even with that and a little negotiation, the best they could do was 15%. We looked at another carrier, we hate to switch carriers after just switching last year, and they could go down to 12, but that wasn't enough of a reduction for us to consider making a change. So we stuck with security, and I'll just give you a couple of the highlights and then some of the pros and cons to this, and then we can kind of pick questions from there. So right now, well, two years, let's go back two years. Two years ago, we had a $500, $1,000 deductible plan. Last year, we bumped it up to a $1,500, $3,000, but then instituted an HRA to keep that $500, $1,000 deductible for employees. So for the employee, it effectively stayed at $500, $1,000. We're going to play with deductibles again, except now we're really cranking them up, going to $3,200 for a single and $6,400 for a family. But we're still going to pick up the remaining balance between $500 and $3,200 and $1,000 and $6,400 to make the effective deductibles for our employees still $500, $1,000. So that's where we get a significant amount of our rate decrease there, was by just jacking up those deductibles. But with us picking up the HRA piece, again, it's basically staying the same for the employee. The other little tweak that happens is there are no copays anymore until the deductible is met. And this is a place where employees might feel a little bit. And depending on an individual situation, this could actually be a good thing, because as it was, the employee was always paying a copay. Now, there's going to be no copays until they hit their part of the deductible, right? So if I'm a family, when I hit my $1,000, now the district is picking up that next $5,400 from $1,000 to $6,400. The district is picking that up. So any copays that you would have had there are now gone, and the district's actually taking those on. So that's kind of the only place where I feel like maybe it's a little bit of a con for employees, but again, depending on your situation, it might actually be a positive, because the district would end up maybe picking those up via HRA when they wouldn't have in previous years. Other than that, everything kind of is staying the same. The out-of-pocket max actually dropped $300 on the single side from $4,500 to $4,200, and on the family, it goes from $9,000 to $8,400. But the big thing here is by selecting this plan, it actually reduces the amount of premiums the district pays by 5%. So we went from a 20% increase to a 5% decrease on the premium side. That 5% is also going to be felt by the employees. So coming out of their check, right now, employees are responsible for 12% of the premiums. By reducing that premiums 5%, that 12% that they're paying is actually going down a little bit. So coming out of their checks, they're going to see a less amount coming for health insurance. Now, will they pick it up on the back end with the copays going away? I guess it depends on the individual. But then, the place where we can really save money here is with the HRA. Right now, the HRA is probably going to come in at about 65% utilization. So if we had every single employee maxing out their HRA, that would be a 100% utilization. We're going to be between 60 and 70 probably, as this, all of these final claims kind of come in. When you look at now the new HRA program, we're going to be picking up a way larger amount of money. It went from $1,000 on the single all the way up to $3,200 for the single. And on the family side, it went from $2,000 on the family all the way up to $5,400. So the amount of utilization that we'll see with the HRA as a total percent is actually going to go way down, because it's a much bigger pot of money that we're going to be paying out. And so when you take all this into consideration, the plan, the HRA, if we have a 50% utilization with the HRA, we've probably come out at a wash 0% increase from this past school year. If it's a 100% utilization, which there's no way it's going to be 100%, but even if it was a 100% utilization rate of the HRA, we're still only seeing a 5% increase in insurance costs from last year to this year, which a month ago, if you would have told me we could get away with 5%, I would have been signing that paper as fast as you could have got it in front of me. Like Terry said, there was a couple moments of wanting to feel like you were going to throw up. But again, so the highlights here are for the employee. This is as close to keeping things the same as we could, while also not taking a huge hit financially. So I hope something kind of clarified some things. Do we have any questions?
Has there been feedback since the email went out to the staff?
Haven't heard a thing. I lied, Steve emailed me.
Yep. We did have one, and it was positive.
Thanks for your work on this.
So thank you, Steve. Of course, they are in summer mode, maybe they're not checking it, but we are very adamant that we will have education here from our M3 representatives explaining exactly where we were at and why we went this way, and individual assistance if needed to help you manage your plan, you know, if you're not quite sure where to go. I just wanted to mention one other thing with looking with the other carrier. Really, the only other option we had was the Aspiris plan, and with that took away the option to have Marshfield Clinic services at all. And it also was much more limiting with our Mayo choices, whether it was Rochester or Eau Claire facility or whatever.
For whatever reason, the Eau Claire Mayos are cut out of that network.
Yeah, so this enabled us to, even though we have a small percentage of our staff who are utilizing the Marshfield services, it doesn't take that away. And I believe, I could be wrong, but some of the Marshfield services are for some of the more intensive services. And I feel that will be very comforting to our crew to know that.
And I just want to add one more thing. When we switched last year, you know, we got a great renewal from security, and kind of in the back of my mind, it was always, well, I'm going to get hammered on that second year. They got us in with the initial offer, and then we'll pay for it from the back end. And I think our reps would agree with this, it's a pretty fair renewal when we look at our utilization. It was a rough year, as I said, you know. I think now we're down to like 116% utilization still. But in today's kind of climate with health insurance, I feel pretty positive as to how we ended up here.
I would just say thanks for your work on that, because yeah, that is not easy to do, and especially when you're facing those kind of numbers. So for them to, for you to end up with the same deductibles with all that work, that's impressive.
Any other questions? Did you hear anything further from you? No? If there's no other questions, consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to contract with Security Health for 2024, 2025 through the plan as presented.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Terry and Caleb.
You're welcome.
Next, we move to Consider Approval of the Milk Bids for 2024, 2025.
You have those in your packet. Caleb, I'll have you comment on that as well.
So we really have two options. We've got Performance Foods, which used to be Reinhardt, and we've got Prairie Farms. We had worked with Prairie Farms last year for sure, and I believe the year before that as well. And that would be my recommendation again for this upcoming year, as they are, I don't want to say significantly cheaper, but it's cheaper, and they're our existing provider.
One of the big questions we've had in the past is kind of where, you know, because I know there is a little bit of variability with the Prairie Farms. I guess, I'm just curious as to if we've seen much of a swing.
It really, it really hasn't.
Okay.
It's pretty...
It's kind of what we expected, but...
It's nothing, nothing insane or it would make me balk at this. You know, I'm happy with Prairie Farms and with the bodies to continue with them.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for Prairie Farms, says Milk Batter to Three Lakes School District for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries.
Realize it's after the fact, but do we hear anything from the kids as far as if they dislike?
Milk?
This particular one?
They'd prefer Gatorade or soda.
I have not, but I will admit I don't have a year or two to that frequency.
Okay, next, we move to Consider Approval of Meal Prices for 2024, 2025.
Okay, I will just make a brief comment and let Caleb comment as well. We did increase prices last year, as you realize that we do not make a profit on our lunch program and breakfast program. However, we're very committed to having the nutrition here for the kids. We looked at the overall situation and decided that the prices should stay the same this upcoming school year. Caleb?
I don't have much to add, except just understand that before last year's increase, it had been a few years before, with COVID and lunches being free, it just hadn't changed. So last year, we raised it the most that we were able to by state law. So we did a big jump last year, and then so this year might be a little one.
Is it still going to result in a loss?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, and I'll be honest, we could increase again by the max that we could, and if it wouldn't reach that number, there's some external forces at play with national school lunch reimbursement rates falling and things like that that are much bigger. that are a much bigger contribution to, to that deficit then, then lunch prices would be.
Anything for?
No, that would be it.
Okay. If there are no other questions, take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the meal prices for the 2024-2025 meal prices as discussed.
I'll second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to identify and consider approval of the academic standards for 2024-2025.
This is procedural. Every year, we have to renew our statement as to what our curriculum is and that we have it posted for our public to see. So once again, it will say the Three Lakes School District has adopted and implemented the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for all subject areas. In addition, the district is in compliance with the Common Core State Standards for the subject areas of math, reading, and language arts. Do you have any questions on that?
Okay, if no questions, I will take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to consider approval of the non-discrimination in district programs, activities, and operations policy 113.
Okay, this is required by all districts in the state to adopt or update their policies regarding the non-discrimination in programs, activities, and operations. We are more up to date than probably a lot of places were because we had our compliance review and we've been working on, on this. However, there is some language change in the definition and I explained that to you a little bit going back and forth. The policy that you are seeing in front of you has been written by WASB through our Policy Resource Guide and it is their legal language that matches what is required by the laws and regulations. So it's really one of those situations where we adopt it, we don't wordsmith it and tailor it to our own specific needs, even though you all know I'm totally about local control. This is the legal ease that we need to have in place. I do want to ease your mind that procedurally and protocol-wise, nothing has changed. We still have the same reporting process. We still have the same people in Mr. Zeus as far as he's our reporter for Title IX, for 504, we have Kerry, other things coming forward to go through, Justin. Those procedures as listed remain the same. You may have heard that this is in litigation and being challenged. It is. Currently, I just listened to our legal update today. Wisconsin is not specifically named in this for change. However, as was told by our attorneys today, it's moving day to day and next week we could have other information. Many of us had requested, why are we moving on this for August 1st if it's still in flux? But this was federally mandated to the states, so we had to act upon this. That is why you're seeing it tonight. Where there is no requirement or no changes that are going to be made, you have an option which is something we don't always have. We can do this reading tonight. I mean, you've read it, you, you've seen the, the change or what we're looking at and then approve it, or you could bring it back next month and then approve it. But it will not, the wording will not necessarily change. In fact, I don't think it will change. But you don't have to go through the two formal readings. We have to have it documented that you were aware of it tonight. So are there questions on that?
So if there's, if there's potential for, for changes to be made, why do they not feel that the writing or reading of this would be any different?
Because I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to be specific to, and I, I might be wrong, but I think it's going to come down to the true Title IX definition is not going to necessarily be changed. In fact, I don't think the definition will be changed. I think the application could be changed, but the protected classes are going to remain the same.
Sure.
And when you get into how the application could be, we're looking at probably two, three, four, five years down the road, you know, with the specific groups that are challenging it right now, like the female athletes in the nation or the Moms for Liberty group. It's another one that are looking for some specific challenges. That's the best answer I can give, not being a lawyer, but I listen.
Just out of curiosity, how many Title IX complaints or investigations do we have in the 23, 24?
Last school year, zero.
Zero investigations or zero that rose?
Zero reported.
Okay.
Or complaints.
Okay. That's good news.
If we choose to accept this tonight, can we make sure that it is at least just kind of relooked at on?
If there's language changes?
For any changes?
I would say this is going to be the one that's in the high priority that as we get the monthly updates, or if not sooner, yes, it would come to us, our WASB group with our PRG Resource Guide especially, they're notifying us in the moment and it would be immediately brought back to you. It would not be overlooked.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we've got this one on the hot button. Yup. We have to.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I would take a motion if willing.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-discrimination in district programs, activities, and operations policy 113 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries.
Thank you, and I will keep you posted.
Next, we move to consider approval of Appendix D Extracurricular Payment Schedule.
Thank you, and I'm going to have Phil Updike, our Athletic Director, take over on this one. This is one of those tasks when, I think, day one, Phil walked in and said, "Guess what? We're going to need you to be working on." And he did the job for us and did it well. So, thank you, Phil. I support what he has put together and what he's going to talk through with us tonight.
Looking through what our past situation of Lakeland came to these curricular payments and schedules, the compensation model was kind of scattered as far as how it looked. I, I felt like there wasn't enough equity in it and I feel like, you know, the compensation didn't directly correlate to things that, you know, like length of time, the coach puts in, amount of responsibility. We tried to go through and look at those, I'll go through the chart with you in a second, and try to, you know, make those things more uniform and more equitable across the board. This isn't something that I haven't been experienced, I haven't experienced before because Lakeland, where I was before, does the similar thing where they, they look at a percentage of the base salary, the teacher's salary, and then they, they assign percentages to each of those coaching responsibilities or co-curricular responsibilities. And the sheets that I just passed out to you, the reason you've got a second copy of that is there was a couple of tweaks that we took care of before tonight's meeting. So your original one got changed just a little bit, but as I go through, I'll point that out. So if you look from the top to the bottom under coaching, you'll see basketball, football, track, and field, volleyball, and wrestling. Trying to keep this uniform, we assigned, we felt that those positions had the most responsibility and the most time commitment of the sports involved. And we assigned a percentage of the base to go along with that. Now, we started this at a, a level that was fairly similar to where coaches are at this time. So like a head coach for football is right around four thousand dollars. If you look at the eight percent, there's a grid that I gave you along with that that shows you what those amounts look like. It's like this.
I don't think we got that one.
It's on our docs.
Oh, yeah, that, that one, yes.
Yeah, it's on your docs. So you can see what those differentials are as you go down through that list. And we feel that that is, you know, those are all fair amounts to start with. Now, understand that because this is a percentage of the teacher-based salary, there's potential for that to go up each year. In turn, the salaries for each of the coaches would go up along with that. Does that make sense to everybody? And then if you look at the, the grid again, where it talks about steps, step one, step two, all the way to six, that was put in place, or we'd like to put that in place because it gives current existing coaches some kind of an incentive for longevity where they, you know, if they're here another year, that they would get bumped up a little bit. And if you look at those percentages, it's not going to break the bank because if you go all the way up to eight percent where that coach starts, six years later where they're finished, it's, it's, you know, it's about seven hundred dollars over the course of six years. So it's, it's not terribly expensive, but it's something. It's an incentive for those coaches to continue on. And we max it out at the six years trying to keep those salaries within check. So I believe we've got everything on here. If you look at the advisorships on the bottom of that page, there's a couple of things that we tweaked there. The drama director, we put at five percent of the base, which is twenty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five. I was told by Jen Meyer that she's taking classes this year and she didn't know if she could do both of them. So I thought, well, we probably better split those two positions into a fall and spring. If we do two plays, if someone else is doing that, then we can basically be two separate contracts. So that's why that's, the differential is there, just because we anticipate two different people doing that. So that's the proposal. As I said, it's the same thing that Lakeland is doing in, in some capacity and it's really nice because when we hire a coach, we know exactly what that coach is going to start. Right now, it's kind of like, okay, where's this person leaving off? I mean, there, there was really not a rhyme or reason and I think that this will provide that. It's good for that standpoint. It's also good for Caleb when it comes to athletic budgeting. He kind of has a pretty good idea of what that looks like across the board. So. I guess that's, that's kind of where I'm at. If anyone has questions, please ask.
Is there ever a negotiation piece based on experience?
Well, that's where that grid comes in.
Right.
The one that has the steps on it. Now, we start everybody, and we're planning to start everybody at step one, but if we can, if we bring in a coach that's got twenty years' experience, we could move them to step five or whatever if we wanted to. That's an option that you have because it is part of the system. But we, we anticipate starting everyone at step one. And again, because when I did the percentages, I started as to where people were at as of today. You know, to the best of my ability to try to keep those coaching salaries where they are so nobody should be losing any money, so to speak. But as we go through time, if we hire somebody later, we don't, you know, we definitely could go within that step system and still be good. That's how we handled it at Lakeland.
Just a quick comment I would add that chronologically fits in well with the question you asked, Word President Williams. With the, the last informal complaint concern I got pertaining to Title IX was about the co-curricular pay schedule that was formerly in place.
Based on sex?
Yes.
Okay.
And therefore, that's part of the reason why, as Terry indicated, when Phil got here, it was get on this. So those are being addressed with the format you see in front of you. And it brings us up to speed with a lot of those things, where the concerns have been voiced.
Understood. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that we have a pre-motion written, so.
That's okay. Is there any other questions, concerns?
I like, I like the system. I like the idea. I like the predictability. Thank you for that. My only question, I guess, is pet band. How much does the pet band actually practice and perform?
Well, we are hoping, we just, you know, with the hiring of our new person, that we're going to amp that up. Meaning, we'd like to have more performances at games, more involvement in our community activities, Fourth of July, those types of things. And this guy, from at least from what we can tell, is, he's really, you know, ready to go for that kind of stuff. So that's, to me, as in calling it an advisorship, so to speak, it's something that we, we'd like to amp up here.
Yes, I, I felt very comfortable with it because in the interview process, and we probably did, I, I would say easily the most in-depth interview ever with this candidate, with Justin and Phil and myself. And this was a very heavy talking point because all of us, and I think you at the table too, feel it's extremely important that that person is visible at the games, bringing up that spirit in the community, and I can tell you, he was all on board. I felt very, very positive with the candidate who we ultimately hired.
I would say with, with that kind of, I guess, feeding into my next thought is, with the schedule, with this predictability, I think also comes a level of responsibility for the people in these positions. You know, they, they need to be, they need to be performing. They, they, they know what we, what they're going to get. We need to know that what we get is what we are looking for.
Just so you know, I am doing evaluations.
Yep, I, I knew the evaluations were big. I just, you know, something, this is just something more to, to help reference that and, and keep going with that. You know, we've, we've got expectations from our kids. We need to have expectations of our coaching staff and, and advisors as well.
If there is not any further questions or comments, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the extracurricular payment schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil, for that work and Terry for pushing it. Next, we move to consider revisions of the 2024-2025 Professional Employee Handbook.
Very good. This comes before you every year. I just want to make a pre-statement, which I had put in your board packet. This year, you'll see very minimal changes. That is purposeful. We, I think, are at that point in time that we've got a pretty solid handbook. We've done changes each year and I think we've addressed some of the, the most important concerns. There are a couple specific things I want to talk about tonight, but I think it's time that we go ahead and take our handbooks and contract with WASB, with our legal department, and have it thoroughly looked at. I'm very concerned that because of lack of knowledge or experience, not again, being a lawyer, though I do believe I'm very well in tune, I think that we need a full-scale look at our policies. and make sure we're not missing something that should be there. I know one of the first things that is going to come up is saying that our handbook, for instance, our Professional Employee Handbook is our policy, is probably not adequate. I believe that everything in our professional or in our employee handbook should be stated separately within the policies and then pulled in. And you will find gaps if you do much looking at it, which I've looked at it probably way more than I should. So I would like to do that. So, but to get the year off and started, there are things that we have to go through, and I'm going to do that right now. Do you have any questions before I get started and ask to my reasoning why I'd like to bring this back around during the school year, most likely? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Jen, for getting the updated cover to us for that. So, and you did see 23, 24, that had been changed. The first one I want you to take a look at is on page four. In the employee handbook. And there you will see that the district goals are updated. They're always representative of, you know, almost a year behind, but that's how we track it because it's after the fact that we have our planning retreat and get things in place. So that page has been updated. Exactly what we've done and agreed upon, so nothing new there. Looking at page five in the yellow highlights, that is the contracted teacher day. So the language there says there's a 187 contracted days with 173 being teacher-student contact days, nine and a half being professional learning days, two flex workdays, two parent-teacher conference days, and a half a day for open house. Then I just have the comment that might, the schedule might vary from year to year as determined by the school board. Professional certified staff who are employed for periods exceeding beyond the normal school day will be compensated at hourly rate for curriculum pay in the appendix section of this handbook. And annually, the school board will adopt the calendar that will be available on the district website. That's not new language, but I thought it's really important that we circle back and know that's what it could look like. Because there's always the potential that we might have 189 days instead of 187. And I don't ever want our employees to be wondering why that is. Did you just add two days? This is something that kind of mends and it flows with our needs. Questions on this one? Okay, again, it's just capturing what was in our calendar. Then on page 21, as far as where we post under transfer requests and reassignments, notices of vacancies will be posted on staff bulletin boards. I lined that out and said on weekend. We have moved since I've been here, but especially the last three years, to everything being on weekend. Now, I had lined out the on-staff bulletin boards. If you would like that to be in place, that can remain, and we can say and on weekend. But I just don't, I personally am not the keeper of the bulletin boards, so I'm not real sure how well those are kept up. I do know that weekend is updated. Emails go out and say that there's a posting or that this has been, you know, brought forward. Principals share that as well. But I think it's important that we have that stated. Questions or comments?
I have a separate question in that same paragraph, but not on the bulletin boards. Is there a reason there's a different font for the be considered but not guaranteed to fill sentence? Was that supposed to be highlighted, or is that just a?
So this is actually different font? And the only reason I was concerned is that this was an issue that came up in the last year? So.
No. The language did not change. Maybe in draft form, it was something, because I go through, throughout the year.
Yeah, considered but not guaranteed.
Yep, that's, that is how the original language is written. And it was probably up for consideration. I didn't realize the font was changed, but that language has not changed. That font should be corrected to match the rest of the font. Unless you would like to talk about it now, being worded differently. Okay. Good catch.
Has anyone said anything about things not being posted in hard copy? Any of our staff?
Not to me. And that would be, I would say, that would have been the responsibility of our former board person if it had something to do coming from my office. See, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And where Phil does, the majority of the postings with his, you know, extracurriculars and stuff. I know Lisa's on top of that. I didn't talk to Lisa about posting on bulletin boards. But I do know that.
She does. We put it in our office, we put it in the lounge, she puts it in paper, local papers.
We always have it in the paper, yeah.
Ms. West has sent stuff out for us online, and we also utilize weekend where possible, so.
And do the weekend updates go out to the staff in email also?
They're.
That there's updates?
Yes. Well, you have to, and that's just it. We, I would say, we have to have it through weekend over just the bulletin boards or by email because that's the only way that we can guarantee that there's equal opportunity for everybody to have that. Now, that's not saying that there might be a position that is posted only internally. If I know that we've got internal candidates, say for a paraprofessional situation, and we're not looking to bring in another position, we can post something internally only. But I do think we need to make sure that weekend is stated because that is the primary source that we are referring people to go to. And that is the hard paper trail, if you will, even though it's electronic, that gives us the historical that we can go back and refer to.
Ninety-nine percent of the districts in the state use weekend, so it's a very popular system.
My only concern about that is if the, if it's posted on weekend, of course, but is the staff, if the staff is not checking that, if there's an email that goes out to the staff to say there's updates to weekend, are these available positions, then we fulfill that hard copy bulletin.
Terry's been doing those. We've done that more in the spring, talked about it, and she's been sending them out. So I think, yeah.
But I have no problem taking the line out and with, you know, making the alteration, the altered version and say posted on-staff bulletin boards and on weekend to double cover it.
I think you're double-covered by having it on weekend and sending a staff email.
Okay.
Unless anyone has affinity for hard copy?
If we have it listed this way, and if we choose to put it on a bulletin board, that's just an added bonus.
So if you write it, you got to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we're legally covering everything by the weekend and the email, we're good. My only question, based on what you just mentioned about the internals, is should we say notice of vacancies will be posted on weekend? Internal, internal-only postings may be posted or will be posted on bulletin boards or sent out via email?
Well, what I've done with that, because that is not very often that comes up, and it's always through special education. I asked Kerry to speak with each of the individuals individually. So that's happened consistently, hasn't it? That she's had the conversation with them as well as letting them know it's, if you want to do this, it's being posted on weekend. So I think we're covered, Josh, but if you would prefer?
Yeah, to selectively offer internal positions to people and not posted, I think can get.
No, it's posted in weekend.
Even if it's internal only?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you meant internal only did not go to weekend.
No, it always is.
Okay.
The problem is probably some of our staff may feel like, well, you already know how I am as an employee. Why do I have to reapply on weekend? But it's for that specific purpose exactly.
Got it, got it.
Right.
Sorry, I was assuming weekend to be public for all.
Yeah, it is.
Not just, not just internal.
Yeah, yeah, you've got two choices.
Gotcha.
Yes, everything goes through weekend.
Never mind, oh, good.
Okay. Any other questions on that language?
Terry, just one more thing. I don't know, we missed page 10, there was an update. There's a strikeout in a Word.
I missed that one. Ah, yes, thank you for catching that one. Okay, this came out of discussion with Justin and I, again, looking at Title IX very closely and our reporting and such. Currently, there's a strikeout here at the end that says, well, the whole sentence backing up, says unwelcome sexual discriminate or unwelcome sexual advances or touching sexual comments or jokes sexually explicit derogatory statements or discriminating remarks which are offensive or objectionable to the recipient or cause the recipient discomfort or discomfort, comma, it was humiliation, or interfere with the recipient's academic performance. We believe that that last piece, or interfere with a recipient's academic performance, is limiting it to the student. The student would be, this is again, an example of it was a matter of the handbook. This should not matter or be perceived as pertaining only to a student. This is anybody. So we felt that it would be important to take that line out because in any way that this is implicated and affects a human being, it should be addressed. So in taking that language away, we believe it was carryover from many years ago. And then I chose to add discomfort or humiliation, period, because it doesn't limit the group we're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and whether it interferes with their academic performance or not, it doesn't matter.
It's irrelevant, yes.
That's, that's, yeah, totally.
Right, and it appeared like that was maybe copied and pasted from a student handbook. This is our adult employee handbook that we're looking at right now.
Right.
And so it kind of made it gray, not, not gray, but it sort of was confusing. This is to someone who's in school right now, because our professional employees, obviously, are adults in the building. Wanted to apply to everybody.
Thank you for catching that one, because that was an important one. What's the next one that you have? Is it page 39? That's what I have. And I made an update to this one, actually, today because it was a suggestion that we've talked about for a couple of years, and it came back around. Let me know if you're seeing it.
I'm going to change on 39, because it's the appendix.
Oh, look at, in your board docs, there's a second document.
Oh, is that the replaced page?
Yes, the replaced page. Would you please take a look at that?
The teacher?
Yes, the teacher language. Yes.
All teachers shall report.
Yes, can I look at yours real quick? My computer is dying on me, so I didn't change it. And, Mr. Coach, I'm glad you're here because this came out of a suggestion that we had talked about in the past. So this is additional language. And before we read the language, I just want to preface it with this. It's a practice that we have been doing already. I know that Justin and Steve both have done this when we've had employees alter their schedule for various reasons. And we've been very good with it, and we're supportive of it, but it would be nice to have some actual language within the teacher portion. So it starts with, "All teachers shall report to their respective schools by 8:00 a.m. and remain in school until 3:45 p.m. bolded or until all school buses are gone, whichever is slated." I wanted that highlighted because we cannot have the practice of teachers walking out when the buses are still here. That's just not good for business. This is the additional language that I have written, and I did get principal approval on it. It says, "Upon request and with prior administrative approval, consideration may be made to honor a consistent daily schedule with a start time prior to 7:45 a.m. and leave time of 3:30 p.m. The teacher would be required to attend all after-school meeting and professional learning sessions as scheduled." That's understood, and that has been the practice, and we've had no problem with people following it. The reason we've avoided actually going language-wise is because it doesn't apply to all. And, you know, you try to have a handbook apply to all, but it potentially could. The reason I bring it up is sugar camp. Sugar camp by virtue of busing is probably not going to be able to leave at 3:30 because often the buses are still there at 3:35. They could be starting their day early and leaving, you know, when the buses are gone, and that would be fine. We are not administratively looking to be minute counters. That's not what I'm saying, because these same people who come in, you know, like, it would be prior to 7:45, they're the people that are walking in with me at seven o'clock or 7:05. I mean, they're, they're here longer.
Based on choice.
Yes, they're based on choice, and they, right. And they choose to do that. And if that's something that works for them to be done when the day is done, knowing their obligation, you know, we've talked about it administratively, we feel we can support that. Now, if there's a case where it just can't be, I'm very confident that Justin or Steve or Todd would say, or Phil, I'm sorry, it just went work. You know, we need you here because, and the professionalism of our staff, I think we could talk it through. I really don't see a situation where it couldn't be worked out, but that's the language that comes in there. So let's take questions or concerns on that one before the next little statement after that.
I like it. I have to say, it's something basically close to this that's been brought to my attention before from public.
Oh, really?
Being noticed. Teachers leaving too fast, too early, not being available, you know, at the end of the day when maybe a quick question needs to be asked. I like it.
And again, I wrote consistent because this would not be the option of, well, Monday and Tuesday, I'm going to start my day at eight, but then I'm going to come in the next day, you know, and not have anything to it because we have to live to a schedule to some degree, you know, here. So, for that very reason, so parents or, or other meetings or things can be put into place. The other comment that I had added there was just to clarify, because again, it's old language, that I think there was potentially in the past where, when the students left, it said they could leave. I take the example of our last day of school. Students are leaving at 12:30, but it's still a full professional day, and we have things scheduled, and technically, we have summer vacation coming. And even though our contract might be a day or two beyond that, or maybe it ends that day too, it'll depend on the year. I just wanted it very clear, so it didn't look like, well, why aren't we able to leave? You know, I can't think of any other situations where that is going to currently apply, but I just wanted that to also be clear for people in reference. Nate, did that sound good to you?
Sounds good.
Because I know it's one we've talked about as a staff for a few years. Any other questions on that page?
Are you going into the second comment, or was that kind of?
That was the second comment.
So, so on the second comment, I guess, does it need to say on full student days? Or can it just, or does it just need to say on student days, on student school days?
What do I have written?
On Fridays, sorry.
Yep, on full student school days.
I mean, even if it's a half day, don't?
Yeah.
I mean, they should really be there until buses have left, shouldn't they?
Well, they should be there all day. If the teach, what I'm really trying to get at is if the students leave early, the staff doesn't leave early at 12:30. Because this says prior to a.
That wouldn't be a full student day then. That would be a half-student day, right?
How do we make that intent clear? Or do we just leave it?
Was this brought up because we noticed a pattern of Fridays and before holidays, people scooting out early? Was that the original? Was that the original?
The language has always been there. That language has always been there for the on Fridays. It said on Fridays or on days preceding holidays or vacations. The teachers shall end their day after the students have fully departed and buses have left the grounds.
I would say on all days.
On all days.
Right.
Or just say on Fridays or on student school days. But you're wanting them to stay till...
Three. So, it would be, it would be uncontracted days.
So, contracted.
Contracted days.
Because even if the students have a half day, it would be a teacher full contracted day.
That's what it needs to say, or on contracted days.
Because then do you even need Fridays? Could you just say on contracted days? No matter if it has anything to do with a holiday or vacation?
Yeah, but then the rest still doesn't fit because then it's still, even if it says on contracted days, until students have fully departed or buses have left, it still gives the possibility of leaving when they're gone. Although if it's a contracted day, do we have to pull out, do we, do we need to just pull out the student portion on Fridays or, or school, or contracted school days? Or just say on contracted school days or preceding, or preceding holidays or vacations? The teacher's day shall...
Maybe that's why it was left the way it was. I would say at this point, Josh, and the rest of the board, the language that was there would stand and I would just address the individual question of, no, you cannot leave on the last day of school early because it is a fully contracted day without putting it in the handbook because that is within the teacher contract. So, I would say with your approval, I would strike that language and leave it exactly as it had been written. On Fridays or on days preceding holidays or vacations, the teacher's day shall end after the students have fully departed and the buses have left the grounds. And address those unique situations when they come up.
Or do you just say teacher's days shall end as per, as per contracted?
And take out the after the students?
Mm-hmm.
At least in gray area because it still sounds like they can leave after the students have fully departed.
Yeah, but if it's a contracted full day...
Right.
Then they, oh, you're saying if you leave the student part in, yeah.
Correct, if you leave the student part in.
Yeah, I think the student part has to be removed.
Okay.
Because, because that, that's kind of your pivot point there.
Exactly.
So...
It's, I got to tell you, it's not a problem and it's not an issue. It was just vague.
But vagueness leads to problems.
Right. So, are we good with that change? Because that would be the modification that we would make.
What do you, what do you got for intended?
On Fridays or on days preceding holidays or vacations, the day, teacher's day shall end as per contract.
As per contracted schedule?
As per contracted schedule, I could say. Which is reflective of what's in the employee calendar.
Yeah, works for me.
Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay. All right.
So then, so I know that we kind of added in page thirty-nine there. If we go back to the handbook, GHI must just be pushed down to the next page?
Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
We can go ahead and make those edits if it changes the table.
Yeah, as long as it, yeah.
Okay, if we're good with that one, then we will move to page forty-six. And this is what Phil just went through with you. I put it in as draft proposal so you would see that would be what he was presenting. However, the updated draft would now replace what was on page forty-six.
So, with the breakdown of the two dramas?
The, right.
Okay.
The dramas would be broke down. But it wouldn't change the rest of it.
And a couple of percentages would change.
Yes, yes. So, that would be updated. And then I had left in the former schedule on page forty-eight and forty-nine, should you want it, you know, look at it for the comparison when you were looking at your packets. That will come out.
So, this will be struck out?
That will be taken out. Right. And then page fifty is the new step and lane salary schedule. Which you approved earlier in the year. It's just that we go ahead and put that in then. And then finally, on page fifty-one, it's just a change of the date for the recognition of accepting the handbook, twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's what I have for changes. Do you have questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
On page forty-five, do we have to change where it says member to treasurer since we don't have treasurer listed?
Let's see here.
The Board of Education.
Oh, yes, we should. Yes, good catch. We will change that in the, that would be in the individual teacher contract that we will have a place for the treasurer to sign.
I think it has been updated. It's just not in the handbook. It's updated in the contracts.
Yeah, it's always signed contracts and I think it says treasurer.
Okay, it does, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So, make sure they match. Was there any other ones? Good catch, thank you. And with that, that's, those would be the revisions for this. This current handbook coming up.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five Professional Handbook as presented with the revisions that we discussed.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to consider revisions of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, co-curricular handbook.
Mine won't take nearly as long as... Just first of all, to note that this is about six pages less than what it once was. And part of that reason was there were six copied pages out of the WI handbook, Student Handbook, which really, it works in conjunction with our local control handbook, but it really doesn't belong in our student handbook, if that makes any sense. And it includes things like the transfer rules and stuff like that. Those are things that the Athletic Director will look at the WI handbook and in conjunction with our handbook, take those pieces and point them out as needed. I don't see that those pages should be in our handbook, so I took those out. So, moving through this, if you go to page three of the handbook, the non-discrimination statement was updated with the current language that we need to put in there. So, that's really not much to go through, which is the updating warning that goes into those pieces. The main bulk of this is on page nine, if you scroll down to page nine. As you know, late in the school year, we had an incident happen, you know, with the school during the graduation time, where there was an incident that occurred that we didn't have a whole lot of language that supported any type of corrective action or the school's hands were a little bit tied because there was no police charges. But even though, even those things being said, felt that we needed to add something in our handbook that would be able to address those things. They come up as needed. And what I've done many years in the past, Lakeland included, is we had a policy in our handbook called conduct unbecoming. It's a clause that, I'll just read through it. Representing Three Lakes Junior, Senior High School as a co-curricular participant is a privilege and an honor. Students should always be mindful that they represent our school community and their respective teams and clubs. Three Lakes School District will reinforce and uphold the rules and expectations for student conduct in all situations. This applies to all school-sponsored activities and actions occurring outside of school functions. Any of the following types of misconduct during Three Lakes Junior or Senior High School participation may result in suspension from participation in school events. Showing disrespect to staff members, following fellow students, community members, using inappropriate language, rude or otherwise inappropriate behavior, consistent tardiness or absenteeism, behavior that could bring discredit to this Three Lakes School District, dishonesty, and any other infraction within the Three Lakes Student Handbook or Co-Curricular Handbook. And it says corrective action for conduct unbecoming is at the discretion of the Athletic Director or designated, which would be the principal or superintendent. Multiple acts of inappropriate behavior may result in a formal code violation. So, a lot of words there, but basically what it boils down to is there are certain parts of a regular student handbook that was, they don't get covered. This gives you jurisdiction over anything that happens. So that, you know, usually with a conduct unbecoming, it'd be like a game suspension. So, for things that are not necessarily labeled with in the handbook, very common policy. So, I can entertain questions about that in a minute. I got one more piece. And I added this as well because I feel, if you guys as a board may disagree or you may like this, I put in what's called an honesty clause. Honesty clause is defined as a student self-reporting a violation to any member of the administration, coaches, or co-curricular director without the violation being witnessed or reported to Three Lakes Administration, staff, law enforcement, or board members. A student who does self-report a first violation only may have their suspension reduced by ten percent of contracted contests. This honesty clause shall only apply to a first offense violation and the process must recur within seventy-two hours of the violation. Those are my changes, so tell me what you think.
That honesty clause is common amongst other districts.
Correct, yes, it is.
I actually think we used to have something like that that got removed. I don't know why.
Oh, really?
I mean, I don't know if I necessarily agree with it, but I'm pretty sure that that got removed. But I'm, I'm okay with putting it back. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying I think we did have this at one time.
One question that I'd like to ask the board, you know, seventy-two hours, do we feel that that's the appropriate amount of time? Do you want to go forty-eight? I put seventy-two in there to start with. That's...
Seventy-two offers a holiday weekend? In case, like the next time, the next time a student would be in school versus having to try to contact you outside of school hours?
I like that thought.
Plus, a lot of times, they're weighing pros and cons. They're fighting with themselves about it. I... I'm not going to acknowledge that part. It is, it is true. But sometimes a critical thinker might need a little extra time. I have no problem with that.
We might otherwise not know at all if it was never witnessed also. So, the timeframe is also irrelevant at some point.
Is this just a co-curricular thing? Is this something that should be in the student handbook?
Well, it's in conjunction with the student handbook because most of our code violations are in conjunction with things that are at higher levels when it comes to doing, like if some student was to commit a felony or if they were to be suspended or if they, you know, those types of things are in conjunction. The conduct unbecoming gives us a little bit extra there if it's something that doesn't fit within the handbook. I mean, usually kids in our normal handbook, if they swore in the hallway or in the classroom, they might get an in-school suspension, but they would only be, what's the word I'm looking for? Eligible the day of their suspension. It doesn't give you, you know, if the game wasn't until Friday night and they did this on Wednesday, there'd be no consequence unless the coach decided to make that happen.
Other than they couldn't attend practice that...
Well, sure.
When they were...
Sure, sure.
But if the coach doesn't choose to follow up on that, then there's no, there's no penalty for that. And this gives the administration a little bit more, you know, if it's something that's outlandish that needs to be addressed, it gives us a little bit of teeth there if needed.
Is this one going to have the same face sheet as the other?
I believe so, right?
Face sheet?
Yeah, for the...
Cover page.
Cover page.
Oh, cover page?
Do you want it to be?
That can be any way you want it to be.
I just didn't know because we had updated the previous one of the... General like it.
I think I've done it prior.
Yeah, that's my inexperience. I were, yeah, it's just...
Is inappropriate language a generalization, like if it's witnessed?
Well, inappropriate language could be lots of things. I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be profanity. It could be just showing disrespect to the teacher. You know, like that's a bunch of crap. I mean, that's, would you consider that to be profanity? Maybe not, maybe, but it's, this policy gives us the opportunity to make those decisions. And, you know, if I feel like, you know, one of our teachers has been disrespected, I think there should be a possible consequence for student athletic participants. You know, it just, it really helps us with the gray areas, that's all. It gives us a stopgap so that we don't miss something that we choose to enforce. Like going back to the spring, technically speaking, if we would have had sanctions at a high level with that, we wouldn't have any language in our, we wouldn't have had any language in our handbook to support that decision. We would have been sued probably, wouldn't likely, and we would have lost. So, if that makes sense.
Any questions for their follow-up?
Good.
Okay. If we're ready to consider a motion?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, co-curricular handbook as presented with the revisions discussed.
Michelle, second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil, for the updates. Next, we moved, consider revisions of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, five, seven to twelve student handbook.
Very good. Justin, you're on.
Very good. I'm just going to scroll through the Google Doc. Carrie has appropriately made several suggestions to change in language here. Carrie, do you want to speak to any of those as we go through or kind of in general?
They're very similar to the elementary version that were changed last month. But if anybody has any questions regarding any of those, it's just changing some wording. EEN to special education, updating that wording. And then there's something further down in the document regarding our screening process, child finding process. Similar language from the update of last month.
And so, the good news is this is a fifty-one page document. I'm going to start us out on page twenty. I'm gonna start us out on page 25. The suggestion I'm making here is eliminating the phrase detention section there about parents will be notified at least one day in advance if possible. Oftentimes, or, or some of the time, I should say, that simply isn't too very practical. What I mean by that is it, it would cause a problem if there's a Friday morning infraction. Or let's say somebody is tardy for a third or fourth time. Teacher refers that situation to me, the automatic consequences of lunch detention. If we were to say, well, they're not gonna serve it until, you know, so I get notice to a parent, they don't serve it till the next day, well, that's potentially a long weekend. All of a sudden, it's Tuesday and, oh, shoot, kid forgot, maybe I forgot that, you know what I'm saying? So, so I notify parents as soon as possible, but oftentimes if it's a morning infraction, we'd like to serve it ASAP that, that lunchtime. And so then I, I, I don't wanna have something in there that I can't do every time. So that's why I'm suggesting we, we just eliminate the, at least one day in advance because sometimes that's not practical.
I'm sorry, Justin, we, I'm not seeing, there's no page numbers on this, so what, can you give us the...
And the font is...
And the font, the formatting is a little wacky, so can you tell us...
It looks really cool on the Google Doc.
I was gonna say, it looked way nicer when I was reading it on a different computer.
Can you just tell us the, the heading that you're at?
Yes, I am in the definitions and procedures of disciplinary action. And then the, the phrase I was looking to eliminate is under the subheading of detention. For me, it's at the bottom of page 25, but I'm sorry if that's not...
No, it does not.
It does not.
And, and I'll go through these as quickly as I can and when you have questions, please feel free to stop.
If you control F and go to detention, that'll take you there.
No, I, I found it. I was just looking.
If you want, I can upload a PDF up there really quick if you want. You just can't see the notations on the side of it.
It'll be right.
All right, the next one is...
Um, do you, sorry, sorry, sticking with that. Parents will be notified as, as soon as possible? Practical? As soon as practical? Because it just says parents will be notified, well, when?
Of when the detention will take place.
You have to, uh...
Is...
I, I'm not saying we have to. Do we, do we, do you, do you want to just let the parents know that we will...
As soon as practical. Do I leave it as soon as practical of when the detention will take place? I'm good with that.
Anybody else throw in, I guess? Because, you know, I just hate to have, you know, parents will be notified and it's two o'clock in the afternoon and detention wasn't already served at, it was already served at lunchtime kind of thing, you know?
Or it's afternoon, it's either rise.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think that putting it out there so the parents know that we will do our, our, the school will do its best to contact you.
And oftentimes, I'm able to drop whatever I'm doing when there's a student issue and make that call or send an email or connect with that parent. We gotta give some grace time for if it's the teacher notifying of the specifics of it because they're gonna be teaching. You know, they might not be when their prep comes up that they can spend the time to connect or after school or whatever. So, but yeah, that's, that's why we leave it as soon as practical. If that makes sense? All right, on to the next. Now we're gonna go down to the emergency school closing section. There is a phrase currently contained in there that says unless an announcement regarding the closing of school is made on the television or over the radio, all schools will be in session. I suggest we eliminate that because at times, having been someone that's navigating their, the school closing websites at 4:35 in the morning, sometimes it doesn't work. Sometimes when you call the radio stations, they're not able to take your call or it gets, put to voicemail and doesn't get... So I don't wanna have anything hinging upon whether or not it's on television and, and obviously our messaging system has replaced that for the number one reason or number one outlet for that information to be conveyed from the school, so... Uh, next suggestion comes, it's a ways down the home.
Do you want to get rid of however as well? And just start the, go on, just start the sentence with buses may be running behind schedule? Because there's really nothing however that you're...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Or in, or you could just say in such cases, buses may be...
The next suggested update modification is, and, and these are real similar modifications, the next two. In the section that talks about the headings passes from class. And I'm just suggesting there we change, there was, there was language in there that said progress report list. And progress report list is a terminology that staff or students have been using since, at least since I've been here. So switch that to the phrase in guided study hall because that's the parallel terminology that makes it relevant and that's, that's what we've been using more recently. That's the next two changes there in point four and point five. Change, just the guided study hall replacing the old language of primary report list. And then just a little bit down from that, progress reports. Here I'm suggesting an update reflecting the shift from the mailing the progress reports out to parents accessing them via student information system. And I also put in always, always, always printed or sent upon request. So if someone can't or doesn't have any, any success cracking into infinite campus parent portal to view it on their own, we certainly can mail a copy to them or send them digital copy via email or, or whatever if need be.
So I realize that we are discussing, you know, progress reports are now going to, you know, everybody because it's on infinite campus. Is there any reason that we want to continue to take an extra step for those kids who are currently failing for reasons unknown?
Yes, that is a step that is...
Or is that also something that goes through infinite campus?
Uh, in, in terms of extra step, meaning like putting gears on the intervention systems and support systems we have in place? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, or just saying, you know, hey, you know, at the three-week mark, you know, to the parents, hey, do you realize your kid has a D in this gr- in this class?
Yes.
Kind of deal?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that it needs to be language that's a staff thing that we hammer all the time.
Okay, okay.
You know what I mean? Like, we better be letting parents know if we have problems or we're seeing failures. Or even sniffing close to failures. Yes. Uh, next suggested update is really more of the same. Replacing the old language of where we used to print out copies and then people would stop and pick them up and 80% of them are still sitting there because everybody knew the information that they were picking up in paper copy. It was, it was a lot of time spent by someone to print those up and put them out. And again, also adding in the language, report cards will be printed and/or mailed upon request. So if some folks still need them, we can certainly send them, print them copies and send them. The next changes on the schedule changes, under the schedule changes heading. There, we're just suggesting or eliminating, there was a name of a previous vendor of online curriculum that we don't utilize anymore. So to not make it tied to any specific vendor, which could change from year to year. We put in there, students may be able to transfer to online coursework offered through our alternative coordinator in collaboration with the classroom teacher and the school counselor. Those are the big three that have to be on board if we're gonna do anything different than what the established in-person course is. So that's eliminating language that ties you to a specific vendor, which we don't, which we don't use anymore. And then the next one, which is maybe a little bit more in-depth or is, needs a little bit more discussion or thought. A user possession of cell phones and electronic communication devices, that's the next one up on the agenda as you scroll down under that heading. For me, it's right next to page, right at the bottom, page 43. To start out the discussion on this one, from my perspective, when I did a report of all the discipline referrals in infinite campus from this school year, we had four that involved, at the high school. Like, I can't speak to the junior high school, you could if you want, but...
Probably, I, I, I'm guessing three, I didn't look it up, but if it wasn't me.
There, there, there was four documented incidents of where, where phones were, were mentioned as problematic for various reasons. One of them was on a co-curricular, not, not during the school day, but a co-curricular activity after school. So three, three in the school day. That doesn't speak to me, scream to me on the billboard as this is a, this is a huge overbearing problem, right? Like, that's, that's not a huge data set of phone issues being sent to the office, okay? I had a teacher speak to me during the Blue Jay table meeting, we had to tell him of the school year, asking a review or a tightening of cellphone policy at, at that time. Since then, and literally I can't make this up, the day after this was due to be submitted to the district office for all your review, I did get an email from a parent who suggested, very appropriately and, and, and very kindly and gently suggesting a review or, or an, an upgrade, a tightening of the cellphone used due to the distractions of learning environment at the, at the junior high, high school level. That particular email had a small, I, I would say, I've come, I had five or six sets of parents' names listed on the bottom of the request to, to review. And, and citing some, some really good literature as, you know, evidence or as, as research that, you know, cell phones are harmful to learning environment, sometimes in some cases harmful to kids, right? And then subsequently also got an email from a staff member who is sitting back here, I believe, requesting again some review. Now, I had already made some of these changes. This is not, I, I wouldn't call this a wholesale change to the cellphone policy, but I already had some tweaks in there previous to the parent connect and then the more recent staff email. So I'm gonna share with you what I had done previous to this and then if, if Mr. Coach wants to speak to some of his thoughts, he's certainly welcome to do so, but I believe that some of these steps take us in the right direction. First, there were a few things, and, and I would say this, on, on behalf of my time in the building, there are some classrooms I go into for observations or just informally walking down the hallway or popping into classroom where I never see a kid with a device, never. There are classrooms I hop into for an observation where there are devices out some of the time. There are classrooms I pop into where there are devices out from start to finish. Not necessarily kids on the devices for the duration, but they're there, right? Okay, so it's, it, I, I would not debate that the enforcement of our current policy is not consistent. It's, it's, in some places, it's a distraction for sure, in some places it's not, within the same school building, okay? Anyway, some of the things that I believe may be leading to that inconsistent interpretation perhaps of, of our existing policy, I've addressed with this suggestion before you today, all right? I'm suggesting eliminating the language in our, in our policy that says so long as a device does not disrupt the educational setting. Okay? It, it does, it will, and it does. Like whether or not the, the, the student or the staff member would say it's disrupting an educational setting, it is distracting. There's, there's no denying that. I, I, I think that, you know, the reasons I'm bringing some of these things to you is the few times where I've had students in my office for the cellphone, well, it, it, it wasn't distracting me, it wasn't, you know, it, it eliminates some of the gray area. The next one is I'm suggesting replacing the word during instructional time. Cell phones and digital communication devices cannot be used during instructional time, was what it previously read. I'm suggesting we remove instructional and replace it with the word class time. Because instructional time by some, again, students and staff, was I think interpreted as to, okay, if I'm done being the person facilitating the lesson, if now it's your guided practice time, now it's, okay, you, you get together with your small groups and you discuss what we just went through or, or whatever the learning activity might be, now, okay, teacher's done instructing, maybe it was a, maybe it was a five-minute intro to the class, oh, he or she's done instructing, all right, now I can pull out my device, okay? Class time is a little bit more black and white and objective, like from bell to bell is class time. The next phrase may, some of you may remember this from a couple of years ago, okay? I got it highlighted. I'm highlighting it because I, I, I think it's, I, I'm requesting we revisit it. It states, except if designated for an educational purpose by the professional staff member. In full disclosure, there are times where the cellphone is used for educational purpose and, and, and it's encouraged by the professional staff member, right? Like I can think of science labs where kids are taking pictures of their crystals and chemistry growing as they, you know, progress through, right? And that, and that's a part of their lab write-up at the end of the, of the project. Or I, maybe some of you who are parents have seen your kids out in the backyard taking pictures of trees and plant samples because those are part of where we used to have to pull them out and put them in, in, in a folder and take them back in and preserve them, right? They're, they're just doing the digital pictures for their, their biology scavenger hunt, right? Like, there are, I, I would say the educational purpose is, is, is small compared to the non-educational purpose of most of the device use. I also think that, I, I don't think, I know that some of those applications, like the two I just briefly mentioned, and there's many, many more, you know, that, that staff members may at times want or need. The one-on-one devices that we put in our kids' hands all have cameras. They all have the capability to do those same tasks. I think we could figure out a way to get it done with the devices that they have in their school, you know, that the school device that we provide to them. Most of those applications could be done through that. But there is no doubt that a phrase like that does lend itself to interpretation by the student and/or the staff member. So I, I, I'm curious, when I'm done with the, this paragraph, I'm curious to hear your thoughts on, because I know that got placed in there at this very same review board meeting a couple of summers ago. Students not following classroom guidelines will, I changed may to will, have devices confiscated by the supervising staff member and may receive discipline referrals. The reason why I leave the may or, or have the may there is because at times when a student is, is cooperative with the staff member, hey, you had your phone out, leave it on my desk, they may not need to write up a disciplinary fur. If the kid, student says, if you teach, you're not getting my phone, now it's gonna be a disciplinary fur, right? Like, there, there's a difference there, which, that stands to reason. When electronic device is confiscated and turned into the office by the supervising staff member, what that means is that phone sits in my office for the duration of the school day on the first offense. Second offense, parents come to pick it up. That happened once last school year. The, the, the other times it was just the first offense, so... I spewed a lot of verbal out there on that, that, that's what I think. So I, I, I'm interested to hear your feedback on that highlighted, that highlighted. There, there certainly is, we could go, I mean, I'm not advocating for this at this... we could go, I mean, I'm not advocating for this at this time, you could write this tighter and say, "Cell phones don't come in school," you could. I don't feel like it's a big enough issue at this point in time to go with that, what I would say, more wholesale. But, that's my personal opinion, I think that more consistent enforcement of our, of the language we kind of got above one here will do the trick or at least get us a step in the right direction. Because with the recent urgings by a group of parents and a group of staff members, we haven't had time to vet this through as far as going for a more drastic change at this time. Like, I'd wanna hear from every one of our educators, hey, put them on the spot, how many of you actually need a student's personal electronic device for your educational activities? You know, I know what I see, but I don't see everything. So, that, those are my thoughts, my ramblings on this. I feel like what we have on the docket now is a good step in the direction of tightening down cellphone use. The data I have to this point doesn't scream to me that it's an epidemic problem at this point in time. However, it also means that many or some of the teachers who are feeling the cramp of this or feeling the pain of this might be handling it full well on their own and not referring them to the office, not signing the phone down for me to handle. That could be some of it too, so, like I said, I talked enough, I'll sit, listen up.
Mr. Coach?
I think Terry passed on our letter to you guys.
Yes.
So, whenever we talk about phones, and I get tired of talking about phones, it always ends up being almost, you know, at least in schools, almost strictly a classroom management thing, which obviously is an issue. And Principal Zeus is totally right in that it's, you know, some teachers really enforce it and some don't. And the teachers that really enforce it, it tends to go away pretty quickly as far as being a problem. And then other teachers have issues all year, or maybe they don't have issues because they just don't deal with it, I don't know. But I wanna step back and look at the bigger picture, and that is not so much the classroom management issues or the learning distractions, but what the technology is actually doing to the kids themselves. And while we don't have a whole lot of say of what happens outside of the school and what parents allow their kids to do or whatever, we do have a lot to say about what happens in our walls during school time. And there's a lot of research coming out, a lot of studies coming out, showing just the harms that the technology is doing. That, and a lot of people wanting to say, well, that's, you know, just correlation, it's not causation, but what they're finding is it really ties directly to not just the advent of cell phones, but particularly smartphones, particularly kids being on social media. And I really feel like for our kids, overall health and particularly their mental health, that if we went, and I understand this is really late in the game, to do something about it this year, and in my conversations with Justin and Terry, I totally get that we probably need to get more buy-in and have bigger discussions with this. But I really feel like, and talking to a lot of our other teachers and other parents, because I'm both a teacher and a parent, that, you know, potentially, if we went to a beginning of the day, end of the day, phones are just gone, they're in your lockers or whatever, you know, however we do that logistically, I think we would see a lot of our other issues go away, including a lot of our mental health issues that our kids have, huge rises, I mean, just in the Western world in general. But I know, just from a teacher's standpoint, twenty years I've been teaching, I've seen it. Our kids' learning abilities, I think, would increase because less distractions. And there's just a whole range that we tried to spell out in the letter, I don't wanna sit there and go through the whole thing again. But I really feel like from a bigger picture, not just the classroom management, from a bigger picture, I think it would really benefit our student body. And I know one of our district goals is building community, having kids actually talk to each other, you know, at lunch, as opposed to sitting next to each other on the ball on their phones, that's how you build community, you know? I wanna, I wanna see our students living embodied lives, not virtual lives. Because that's just, I mean, that's just not a healthy way to live your life. It doesn't mean that phones don't have a place, it doesn't mean that social media can't have a place, but I think having that reprieve from it while they're here on campus could do a lot of help.
Thank you.
Do you have any feedback?
Sure, my feed-
Sorry, I don't want my-
Well, if you don't want, I don't, if you're asking my personal feedback, my, my philosophy, I do think that we do have a lot of opportunity to control our environment in the school day. I also know that I am all about having the hands-on, engaged experience, whether it's verbal or just interaction or play, you know, that's all part of it. Something like this, I think, is getting the attention not just here or around us, but nationwide, it is being studied. There's even discussion, as you know, some of the states have gone to, like, Los Angeles is going to do a no-cellphone during the school day. I then go to the, this is a big shift, okay? First of all, the board, it's not your problem to enforce it with consistency. We have a policy, I think with the tweaks that Justin has suggested, it makes it a better policy. We have to have our staff consistently following and agreeing to how that policy is utilized too. It can't be that when I go to Ms. Jones, I put it in the basket and everything is fine, but then when I go with, to, you know, Mr. Smith, it's a free-for-all. Because that's what's going to tend to make kids carry their phones on them, have them in case they might wanna make a question, a quick contact or check their social media, et cetera. We didn't discuss about should it be kept in the locker rather than on the person. I believe the research and what Nate has talked about and Justin and I have talked about directly is, if that phone is on your person, you will be distracted. Even if Justin and I are having a face-to-face conversation and it's going ding ding or buzz buzz, you can't tell me that I'm still concentrating on what he's, I'm going, okay, who needs me, what's going on, what's, you know?
Who got in a car accident?
It's there, it's there, right? And some kids and adults are tuned in to not only an email message or a text message, but their accounts, their, their apps, et cetera. So, that's where I fall there. Where I take a little bit of caution is this is a huge cultural shift because if there hasn't been consistency or a widespread district, this is how we do it. And I'm kind of removing the elementary at this point from this because it hasn't been an issue and they are not being used. Am I correct, Steve?
We have the policy that they're asking, that the parent group has asked for, and it's, yeah, we have had no issue. We've had, I think I probably took two phones away this year and had parents pick them up, that was it. And it was, you know, snuck them out at recess or whatever, but-
Right.
They are not out in classrooms ever.
It's just not part, part of the game.
They're in the lockers.
I'm also very realistic and logical, and when we talk about phones, we also talk about addictions. And I also am very aware that our parents now have, I don't wanna say grown up because I'm the old lady in the room, but our parents have become very accustomed to having their phones and making constant contact regardless of the time of the day to their student as well. So, there's a learning curve here too. Could it be handled differently? Sure. Can it be, does it have to be immediate? We've got the ability to call the office or leave a message. I do not want our office personnel, because we have reshifted that, spending all day picking up messages that are not extremely, you know, important messages, just things that could wait. I think the education component is what I'm most interested in. As I said to Nate, I am not opposed to what I call the power down. I think it's really almost, for some people, a benefit to be able to know, I'm stepping into school, I'm powering down with this device so I can focus on this and I don't have to worry about it. I'm, maybe I'm giving myself permission to be excused from it. But you have to make sure your parents understand it, and more important, we have to make sure our students understand why we're moving this way. We don't want them to see this as, they're punishing us, all of a sudden, there was, I could have my phone and now there's no phone? What's the reason, you know? And you can say this is the reason, but you can't just state it and have it be accepted. It has to be understood, it has to be taught, it has to have very purposeful education and messaging behind it. And I think that it's really important to have some time to build that understanding and culture. So, it gets to the point that you may have the students saying, yeah, we're realizing what our teachers are saying, what, you know, what our parents are maybe saying too. It's okay if we power down, it's okay if we have limits within the school day. But I think we don't just make an all-or-nothing decision when there hasn't been the pre-conversation with the stakeholders that should all have some conversation or some knowledge of this. Like I said, if you're asking my opinion, I'd love to get much more into technology free, which sounds counterintuitive to education, but I do believe that. I believe that one of the reasons we have some of the strongest students that we, population, and their educational knowledge and their academic successes, because they are not always on devices. They are playing outside, they're engaged with nature, they're learning that hands-on, and their parents, many of them who have grown up in the technology world, are still committed to making sure those kids are getting that experience. So, that's really important to me, to give you a really, really, really long answer. I get that there's a piece and that there's a part here, but I don't want to do something, what you might call a a rash or an immediate or an all-encompassing without building a firm foundation as to why we're getting there.
Is it possibly a first stepping stone out of the classroom, though?
Yeah, yeah.
And not on their person?
Tricky part there is, bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you too.
I'm done.
The tricky part is the enforcement of it, and we'd figure it out. But how do you, how do you, I don't want teachers or, I'm not gonna be the pat-down person for the phone at the, at the classroom door. Do you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
But we can certainly suggest the keeping in the lockers.
Rather than not on your person as a first up, do you just say, "Not in view in the classroom setting"? You know, if it's in view, it can get snatched by the teacher.
It will, you know, it will, it will, yeah.
Maybe a first up, like you say, you can't necessarily be patting down everybody.
But you do have to come to an agreement before the kid steps foot in the door.
Yep.
Is it gonna be on their person or is it gonna be in their locker? Because if that is not clear, this is going to fail before it's, it started. And I've told Justin, I've got way more important things for him to do than patting down students all day long. I think-
Thank you.
I think that, which to me, okay, I'm gonna go back to, again, the old school. You put it in place, this is the expectation for three or four weeks, you hold firm to it. Yeah, it's kind of painful, yes, it's not pleasant, but that phone is in the locker and that's where it belongs. And if that's not where it is, then there is the consequence that follows. But everybody has to be on board with it and not think that it's somebody else's problem to deal with. So, how much education has to happen before the start of the school year with that? I leave that to these people who are in the trenches. I won't have to.
There's no backpacks as an option because that went really well, that we took those, we took those out of classrooms previous to last school year, and that implementation there was as seamless as it could possibly be, like, it was wonderful. So, we can't say keep them in your backpack. A comment that a really wise and really good educator that just retired from this place said a couple of years ago in a faculty meeting, when we were discussing cellphone enforcement, you know, if we should look at tweaking our policy back at that time, a couple of years ago, he said, "If we completely take cell phones out, who is going to be teaching these kids cellphone etiquette?" Which is a good thing to ponder, like, that's a good point. Who, who, do we think everybody's getting it at home? Maybe, some are, right? Probably not all, right? So, the point he was trying to make is, we as professional educators can help to mold, funnel, you know, educate the kid, the student, the child as to when is and when is not appropriate to pull the device out. That, you know, and I'm not advocating to have the devices in class, but if we say, "Nuclear ban, don't bring them in the building," then that piece of it is gone, we're not, that's not there anymore. But maybe that's not our place to teach kids cellphone etiquette.
Well, is it the teacher's place to teach them etiquette, period? Right, so regardless if it's manners or cell phones, what are we putting on our teachers as a requirement? If we take it out of the classroom completely, there is no obligation to take it away, except when they fail to follow the rules.
Right.
There is no requirement for pat-downs until their cellphone starts ringing in class, right?
Or they pull it out of their pocket.
Right. I think if it's on their person, you still run the risk of the-
The distraction.
For sure.
Right, and that's their, their personal responsibility, right? You will still have those that do it even if you say it can only be in locker rooms or in the lockers during classroom periods.
Yeah, for sure, lockers.
Well, it's also gonna help the staff, I mean, Nate said, I mean, there's teachers who won't allow it and they have no issues, and then the kids jump to another class and not a big deal, I mean, that's been happening since Josh and I were in school here. There were teachers you weren't gonna mess with, and then-
Not me. I'm older than that.
So, again, your verbiage, not during class time, again, whatever you decide with that, whether it's on your pockets, in your locker and stuff, as long as the teachers can get together and have some kind of semblance of, "We're not gonna do this" because if two teachers are gonna enforce it and three don't care, and after two weeks of school, you know?
You're right back to where you were.
You're right back to where you were, so.
Has there been animosity on teachers who are following the policy?
Boy.
Because that happens in bigger school districts, right? There's animosity towards teachers who follow the policy and confiscate the phones and those that do not.
Not that I'm aware of, not, not that people, he got-
Mr. Coach.
I'm the first one, be the last one to hear.
I would, I would say probably not, and, I mean, I don't know, I've never done the research, but for the teachers who are really consistent, who you walk in, I mean, we've got a couple that you walk in the room and you put it in a box. So, then it's, you know, I think that's just, they realize that's the expectation and then there's not really an issue. It's, I think, probably the ones that kind of sort of enforce it, that then, when it gets enforced, students probably-
Or selectively enforced?
I mean, potentially, I mean, I don't know if that's the case, but I mean, I can certainly see that as being an issue.
Yes, that's come up a couple of times where, you know, but that's a classic teenage thing to do too, is-
Right.
When I get in trouble, but they did it, they did it, and they did it, and they did, you know? That's, that's pretty general friendly offense.
Whereas, you know, and that's where the leaving in your locker would really make that simple. Nope. If somebody did, then, well, then they're in trouble.
It still allows the opportunity for parents to have contact with their students in between class periods and takes it out of the environment.
So, would you suggest that somewhere in this language I had in there that cell phones will be left in lockers? Or do you just want us to keep that in mind when we go to enforce it and we talk about it in service before school with the staff?
My personal opinion is something this big, I think it needs to be black and white in the policy. I think parents and students have to have an understanding of where it will be kept. If you want it out of the classroom environment, it stays in the locker. Because you can say it cannot be used during class time, but again, that puts it back on each individual staff member to hold students accountable. to hold students accountable.
Still feeding the addiction, still feeding the restlessness of
When it's vibrating.
I gotta check it, I gotta check it, I gotta check it.
Well, I gotta go check it.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, again, there's no, there's really no argument that, that they need it for work, research, pictures, whatever, like you say, because, I mean, that's, you know, I'm sure a lot of this same argument was given when these were introduced to the students. You know, I'm sure we're kind of almost coming full circle a bit. But yeah, I mean, this is, this is your instructional device, this is what you, this is what you need for class. For, for parents that need to get ahold of their kids, if it's immediate, they call the office. If it's not, they text whatever, and you check it in between class. Yeah, I'm, I can be on board with the lockers for sure.
The, uh, some specifics that, as, as we, we think this through, and Jen just mentioned one of them. But what I had in my mind is, uh, lunchtime. It's typically a time where kids are checking messages, even at the junior high, where there's, where there's a more widespread ban on cellphone use. They're, they're checking messages and things like that. Uh, honor study hall, when kids earn above our Mason Dixon line as far as their grades. Is, is, is that, that, that's someplace they've always been able to utilize their devices. Hey, I'm actually, he might have as many cellphones getting confiscated by parents as I did. I only had one.
I, I think we have to have some steps. I don't think we can go full out. I, I think lockers is a great first step during class time.
But can I say that, including lunch? I mean, when you think about
I, I don't know if, yeah, I don't know.
I mean, when you think about lunch in the real world,
Yeah.
You know, we're supposed to have, uh, you know, be able to do
It's a break.
Do, under a certain
We're as guilty as everybody else.
Well, for sure.
Phone use.
And don't get me wrong, folks, that there's, this, this is gonna be a transition for staff as well.
Cause our staff allowed to have their phones in use during the class period?
They do.
Mr. Coach, you had your hand raised?
I would say, I mean, having the lockers is actually better than I expected this year, I mean, if that's really where we're heading. Uh, just especially with the short notice that we had. Um, with that in mind, um, you know, if they're able to have them during passing periods, then I think lunch would be obvious, yes. You know, like I said, I would love to see it just gone during the school day. Um, but steps, I, I understand that. Um, for honor study hall, I mean, if that's class time, and that's gonna be a big one, I get it. But my question is, if they don't need to use their study halls to study?
What are they doing?
What are they doing?
Right.
And maybe we need to up what it takes to get into the honor study hall.
That's also got the agenda, that's not student handbook thing, but yeah, that's
I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah.
And then, and with those phones out in that study hall, there probably would be less behaviors from a mom.
Agreed, I'm actually shocked when my child responds to me immediately when she's in this building. And then I immediately inquire as to where she's supposed to be and why she's responding to me.
I do that every time.
Aren't you in class right now?
Why are you texting me?
So
And honestly, I thought they were supposed to be kept in the locker.
Me too.
I guess I remember reading an airport where it's always I mean, that's what I would tell my kids, I didn't listen. Well, my two thousand eleven graduate, I had to come pick him up one day because he didn't put his lock, phone in the locker soon enough. I mean, we're talking now what? He's, he's just turned thirty-two years old. So there used to be enforcement in the lockers. And, and so I think when the smartphones became so smart, the rest of us thought it was smart to have them with us all the time. That's probably where some of that changed, I don't, I don't know. But I want it clear. What we're gonna do.
I also think that, that by taking a step like this, you're going to see that they're not, i- it will become a habit. And they're not gonna wanna even keep it in the locker, you know, they'll be in their cars, they'll be, you know, the, it, I, I think it's a good idea to take steps.
Yeah, I don't think we can say, nope, they can't be in the school building right out the gate, cause that will be a, a shock. But I think out of the classroom is a good first.
Our school definitely has been one of, from, from many that I have spoken to, um, school, uh, school board members from other schools. Ours is definitely the, probably the most lenient that I've run into. A lot of them are absolutely not, no way. Definitely not, definitely not in the classroom for use.
I think from a school board perspective, not a staff or in, inside perspective. We have adjacent school districts who have zero tolerance cellphone policies, right? But still run the same problems with the classroom. So from our viewpoint, it's easy to say.
I'm, I'm just saying from policy, from policy standpoint. Um, from another interesting kind of side note, that there actually is a nationwide fad of teenagers, young people who are sick of the social media, who are admitting the issues that it's created. And they're going to, they're going to phones that are, that, they look like s- smartphones, basically just from a pictures and a nice display standpoint, but don't have internet access. They are just simply text messages and phones. So, I mean, this is getting to be a, this is a nationally recognized issue without a doubt, as, as this, and that's why it's coming up here for sure, but, but there are a selection of these people who are taking it into their own hands and saying, nah, I don't need it, so, you know, interesting side note.
So, in lockers is the expectation, not in classrooms. Good with that? Okay. Lunch is okay, passing times are okay.
Passing times are fine as long as they put it back in their locker and don't carry it to the classroom.
Well, well, and that's, that's their responsibility, so.
We're teaching them etiquette.
And last but certainly not least, honor study hall, they don't
Class is class. It's an, it's an interesting, it's an interesting
There's checkerboards in there and all sorts of, who is in there?
I think there would be a Or a great opportunity Or a great opportunity for our honor study hall to do something back for the school, like go into the elementary school or tutor or, or do something that continues to build them during that
Not cellphone related. Yeah, if you take it away from them, they will find something more constructive to do.
I would say from, when my wife was here, she graduated in ninety-nine. She spent every morning, well, every, every week, she went over and helped with the at the library. Um, she had a study hall during that time, she went to the library and did story hour. And she was in, I think, the second grade class almost every single day. So it's something that we used to do, I don't know if that's been something that's just been lost over the years or decided to stop it, but something we used to do.
There will have to be an education component on high-speed steroids because as, as pro as the people are sitting in here, there will be some parents who are not in agreement
Yeah, do, do, do we need to do we need to post this and put out for common before next meeting?
So, so, along those lines, exactly what you're just saying, for every parent who's angry when their kid responds immediately to the cellphone text, there are parents that will call scathing hot mad because their kid can't respond to their cellphone. It, 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 it happens, not every day, but it happens. So, it, it, I, I would suggest maybe, uh, we, well, yeah.
Do we, do we propose, do we propose the change? Put something out via email or notice to parents?
Social media?
For a so, some sort for some sort of a comment, small comment period for a s- review at the next meeting? I, I mean, I realize that's really pushing limits, but if we say this is the intended, this is the intended language.
What's our requirement for printing though?
We don't print.
No print? Oh, then.
Not, not to throw a wrench in this, but, and maybe the people who are in other schools can answer this, but the one, the one issue that I've not chosen not to address, what do you do with the Apple watches and the smartwatches? And it's the same issue, is that a total ban on those as well, or is that something that? Cause I think, if you look at how many kids have those now and they're independently, they're not necessarily tethered to a phone anymore. Isn't it just gonna sh- I, I'm just
Yeah, totally.
Because I hope the teachers, as soon as we really enforcing that, it was, what about these watches? And I wanted to, and I said, I'm not, I'm not touching, you know, parents bought on a five hundred dollar watch, I'm not gonna say we don't have an issue with it, it was initially when they, when they first came out, that it was, you know, I had second graders coming with the watches on and they're talking to mom or dad or whatever, but it's kinda died down, but I know it's a potential issue too.
Technically speaking, we can regulate it because it's, it's already phrased in here as electronic communication devices.
I just don't know.
I think it has to be mentioned.
Right, you know.
Just, I, I mean, I come in, I'm, I'm gonna devil's advocate a little bit and argue for some of what the kids are doing cause I see the honor study hall and you have kids in there three, four hours of a day. And they're your high achieving kids who are taking classes wherever, and if they are done, they are keeping up and they are your high achievers. And then you're saying you can't do this also. I feel like they've earned the right to do that and almost adults, and you've given them, they're, they're there, they, they have to have some of that. And not, there's also kids that are using them creatively, like there's apps where they're, they're building in Canva. You know, like I'm watching kids coming in and asking me questions about editing software on an app. So it's not like there's a total, these are horrible devices, they're really useful devices. And it's, where's the appropriate time for it and which setting is it okay? So I think there, you know, there is more than just like get rid of them. You know, I see my kids, I see kids in there using, I know everyone hates like TikTok, but they are doing that during honor study hall and it's fun for them, it's a, a chance to do something together that is fun, so.
Are you saying, is your recommendation that that particular
I think honor study hall, I would
Is, is separate from the classroom?
Yes, I would argue that that, that's a spot where you wanna really think about why you're taking it out of that environment. I get that there's like so many things they can do, but they are doing cool things too on phones, it's not just a bad tool.
Yeah, and if you leave it, maybe that just needs to be a, if you, if you were to leave it in honor study hall as a perk as a earned benefit, that just might be something where it's a staffing expectation of hey, these kids need to be not mindlessly on it, I guess.
And they're, they're, I mean
Cause they should be, whoever's doing that should, should know whether it's a mindless.
Justin's right, it was last year. They're in there playing games and they're doing all kinds of stuff, you know, there's a lot happening in honors, but
I realize, actually, but, yeah.
I feel like to capture the spirit of what we're talking about here, that first sentence is gonna need to change. Says students are permitted to possess cellphones and related digital devices in the school building with the exception of restrooms, locker rooms and kind of study halls. Give me some time to reword that, to basically say you can't have them in classrooms, right?
Cellphones are permitted within the, within the bounds of the school or within the school building, with the exception of just not say students are permitted, just say or electronic devices or electronic communication devices.
Well, you could say with the exception of classrooms, restrooms, locker rooms and guided study halls, you can add a sentence that says, indiv- students who have earned the right, uh, to be assigned to honor study hall are, are privileged to carry their phone or use their phone.
Or, or, or students, students may use their devices in honor study hall, lunch, passing time before, after school.
Yeah.
It gets us a little wordy, but it spells out exactly where you can and where you can't.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm, I was waiting for some closure to follow the policy, but I wanna offer up, uh, at the national level, um, with the advocacy that Gina and I are involved in, we recognize the exploitation and risk and vulnerabilities of various, uh, social media platforms. And, uh, the organization that, that we volunteer with has really ramped up their resources to address that, guidelines and policies, and I'll make that available to the school. Uh, that's not so much a policy, but, um, does recommend things like, you know, cellphones in restrooms. And a pretty, pretty obvious reason there. And the sextortion, uh, has really spiked. And, and that's done over, uh, smartphones and cellphones. So, I'll make that stuff available, um, to the school and, and you can use it as, as needed.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Justin, you made one point that I just, before we beat it any further, you said you're relooking at what guided study hall should be. Maybe that, I'm not, the policy you're talking about with the language, it makes sense. But if you're looking at what guided, or I'm not, sorry, not guided, honor study, what entails being in honor study, um, hall, should probably be, as it was mentioned, ramped up. And then probably some expectations very clearly stated as to if there is going to be device usage, you know, um, again, appropriate usage. That's, I think, something more at the building level, the teacher level to figure out if we know they can be there. I don't know how you determine what is worthy and what isn't, I wouldn't wanna be that person.
A honor study hall?
Yes, for an honor study hall, you know, like Jen said, there's some really good things happening. And maybe they've earned a few minutes of fun too, if they're taking their extra courses and their dual credits and they're, they're caught up. You, you know, maybe we shouldn't have to regulate all of that, but I think that can be figured out by the staff with you and your team as to what that could look like. I think it is a step towards what everybody is saying they would like to try to get to. Um, I would not be surprised, in fact, I heard it in my legal update today that there is some legislation that's circulating and you might start to hear things coming from the state level about cellphone usage. However, my question would be this, you wanna be very, 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 very careful about giving up local control. Because I do believe, at least for the Three Lakes School District, which is the school district I'm concerned about, we will always make the better decision than a mandated decision for what's best for our students and our kids and our community. But it isn't, it is being discussed right now. So are we at a point on this one that we can know if we said?
The language that we're talking about here.
Alicia, I'll let you.
I think Justin has more updates, but not even through the
Okay, so cellphones, if we went on from there. Uh, the other one, the next one is work permits were completely scratched because that, thank the Lord, is no longer a function of school offices. Um, and then the only other changes are more of the E E N, some special wording that carry And then the only other changes are more of the E E N, some special ed wording that Terry.
Did anyone have specific questions for me regarding those changes in the wording? It just reflects our current procedures. And instead of, they used to do an annual child development day, um, that has shifted to a monthly child fine screening.
And this is the same as what we did in the elementary?
Correct, yes.
Generic question and maybe this is way more in depth than I wanna ask, or maybe it's more, maybe it's just as simple as I could imagine it to be, but they used to call it special ed, special education, they got away from it and now they're going back to it. Is there a reason? Just not making up their mind?
It used to be more like E E N.
It was always special ed, I always knew it was special ed, it was always called special ed. That's, that's all it ever was.
And in the legal documents though, it was, you would see more of the E E N and that's why I changed that wording to special education versus E E N. Just the programming names, I mean, it's just a formality and a change in the name. Ours were, I, I don't know why, I mean, this this document has, has been here for a while and it's always had the E E N. I mean, when I started here, it was E E N. I don't know if that goes way back to, maybe Nikki can talk to that a little bit too, cause she's been here longer than I have, but carry over. I'm not sure why.
Anyways, please, not something that needs to be discussed, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or concerns?
Anything else from?
Can I read through the?
Please.
I was just gonna ask, do you have a draft?
Yes. Students are permitted to possess cellphones and related digital devices in the school building with the exception of classrooms, restrooms, locker rooms and guided study halls. Cellphones and digital communication devices cannot be possessed during class time. And there I changed possessed, it's now possessed, not, cannot be used, so cannot be possessed during class time. Cellphones and digital communication devices, I feel like I give that phrase too much, no, but cellphones and digital communication devices may be used before school, after school, during passing times, lunch and in honor study hall. I was gonna put a little parentheses there, per the guidelines set forth by the supervisor in honor study hall. Is that appropriate?
I think that's appropriate.
I would say it should be put in there, yes.
Justin, not to complicate things, but you have a few students who
Yes.
Who have a device because of medical reasons.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And that is on their person all the time.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if you have to specify that with them.
Unless medically necessary.
Yeah.
Something that would spill out in the I E P or?
Um, if that student is in special ed, yes, but there are some who have that or not, so.
I'll just maybe put an asterisk at the bottom, is medically.
Medical exemption is available.
With the understanding that it's used for the medical purpose only and not for any communication or other applications.
Can I throw another one in there? What do you do with teachers for using it for a tool, like editing movie clips and that's an assignment? We don't have those programs right now and that is, that's what they're using primarily for that. I know Global Science did that for a couple of projects, never phone editor.
Do we think the coursework?
Yeah, user. Their phone, but it's, the phone's easier, it's just.
I think exceptions, there has to be some sort of exception clause. If they have an application to identify leaves or, or something and they're, they're doing in a classroom environment, there has to be some sort of.
That was why that phrase got put in there.
Right.
Two years ago and it, and it's, it's, it's tough and it's, it's this much, compared to this much phone use, but.
Right, and worse than.
There's also, there's also probably, and I don't want to spend money we don't need to spend, but there probably are some things, programs that we could purchase for them to put on their school devices that would, right, Steve?
They are totally able to use their school device to do those same things. It's just not as simple or convenient.
Yes.
Do we write something in there that a teacher has the ability to
Request to administration.
Request from administration, a temporary.
And then announce it over the last week or something, send it over by, why do they all have their phones?
So I don't tackle anybody in the classroom.
There's gonna be some growing pains.
Yeah.
For sure.
Absolutely.
We educated people without them for a long period of time and made really successful people.
Right.
So.
Man on the moon out of one room schoolhouses.
So I think people can survive or do it on their off time.
Exceptions will be made for electronic devices documented as necessary for medical reasons. Some of them, Carrie?
Do we still want the students are permitted to possess? Do we just wanna say?
Cellphones are permitted.
Cellphones and electronic devices. Or electronic, what do you got? Cellphones and digital communication devices?
More speaking, yeah, more speaking to all.
Yeah, be, yeah, it speaks to all and if you start out a paragraph with students are permitted, well, they automatically, all of a sudden that door looks to be way more open than maybe it should be.
Cellphones and digital communication devices are permitted in the school building with the exception of classrooms, restrooms, locker rooms, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Do we want, uh, do we really wanna, sorry, do you really wanna put classrooms in that particular sentence? Because as we've just said, there are going to be cases. The next, there are the next sentence just saying cellphones and digital communications cannot be used during class time or possessed during class time? I mean, that basically says that piece, I don't know if I'm going too far, but those two things are kind of, they're either one in the same or they're not, yeah, they're kinda.
What if you, what if you start, I mean, and it's gonna be positive or negative, but positive for the students with where they can use the phone. Start with that.
They can do.
Like students, you know, cellphones can be used, da, 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 da.
Students are allowed to use.
You know, start like in their positive.
Yes.
Can we look at verbiage from the other school districts surrounding us that have a very strict cellphone policy and see what they have worded in there? I mean, again, we work in the other districts in a capacity and it seems very efficient how they have it and it's pretty um, cut and dry, at least from an enforcement standpoint. But I mean, I don't know if this has to be done right now and we're trying to rough for the school year to get started, but.
Well, I think, I think we all know that, I think we all here know what direction we're going. I mean, we have, we have granted the ability to make the right decision to administration before. I, I, I don't think that you guys, I don't think there's any question on where we're going with this, so is this something where we give Justin and Terry time to write this appropriately? And not necessarily sit here and have Justin under duress trying to get this done.
Which is not the best type of, that's it.
So.
I think there's a difference between self, uh, between the student handbook, which is truly policy, and then your overall technology and usage policy, which goes a lot more in depth with that. I did actually call some school districts because there was a letter from the parents that mentioned some school districts. So I talked to those superintendents and um, it was very interesting. The feedback I got was, it was the consistent enforcement. It didn't matter what the policy said, it was the consistent enforcement and expectations by everyone. And they shared positive feedback that things were working well. But it wasn't because their policy was changed. They pretty much had that policy in place. So I, I don't know that you have to wordsmith it too much more than what you've done here. And then when we go into the bigger overall technology and policy work that, you know, like I mentioned, I wanna do a lot of work with this. Um, we can look at some of those specifics then. There will be growing pains. I, I know that there will be. We all do, but we can work through it.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I think, I think so.
Okay. And routine of motion when ready. Are we looking to approve revisions as presented? Providing Justin the ability. Justin the ability to make modifications.
Is it your, is it your hope or directive that we come back next month with a? I mean, our, our paragraph got substantially longer here.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to and you guys need the time to, to sit on it for a minute to try and narrow it down, see what's redone and see what's, I mean, the, the principle of this is, I think, is very clear.
The intent is clear, we don't want class, we don't want cellphones in classrooms.
Yes, so.
The language and the clarity.
It's on you.
As long as you'll support it.
Trust you.
Are we ready to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, seven through twelve student handbook as presented. And with any other modifications made by administration.
Done with that?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Stacy, seconded by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye. Aye, aye, aye. Opposed? Unheard, motion carried. I know that was painful, Justin, but thank you for your work in, in updating it and uh, Mr. Coach, um, that document was very well written. Um, I appreciate the staff coming forward and putting the effort um, and doing the research.
Thank you, I have a lot of help on it.
Um, next, we move to consider approval of the CAM three M S A site design parking lot proposal.
Okay, this does not have to be real long, this basically comes down to one question for you. As you know, we're still um, in the litigation process, which I'll talk about on the next agenda item, I believe. But we do now have plans, which I've shared with you from M S A, as to where that driveway can be relocated. The driveway is moved up more to the west, it is on the high land and it is um, proposed now for the two buses could get into it and ten cars could be parked off that, off the highway. So that's what they're, they're sharing with us. If you recall, that comes out of us requesting that they um, honor some of the work that we had done before, which did not come to fruition and we felt that we uh, should have a little bit more assistance from their services and so this is what they have provided for us. Their question is, before we go forward with any of the next steps, is, is this something that we first of all are ready to go forward with now? Or do we want to be looking at contracting this out ourselves or putting this out for bids? So I opened it up with that for your thoughts and discussion and um, I'll share my thoughts as we go, depending on what you would like to know.
I think we contracted out ourselves, we can save, we can save substantial money by having a contractor. If, I mean, nothing, nothing against M S I, M S A, they, they do great work, but there are many times that they have certain things that they have to do or do things a particular way that aren't necessarily the way that it needs to be done or the most cost effective.
Okay.
Um, I really think we could do this more economically sound by, by doing it ourselves.
Does it, maybe move forward with one contractor or we get?
Well, I, I think that's where our, our conversation here comes, comes in. We don't have to have them do the bidding process for us. We could, we could put that out ourselves.
What's the dollar limit? On that before it has to go for bid?
I think I would have to check on that. I, I wanna say it's five thousand. Oh, no, it's a lot lower than that.
I know Towns is twenty, Towns is twenty five, anything over twenty five grand has to be bid.
Has to be bid, mhm. I just don't believe.
We fall under the same, I don't know.
I don't think we can just assume that it'll be done in kind because when we had other groups that wanted to help us, it was very much tied to the trap team and I, I would not put that expectation on, on anybody. So, and, and I, I don't know what our status is at this point. And the other question is, are we ready to be moving forward with this now or do we wanna entertain the resolution of what is still in litigation and what's coming before there's development?
I think we're at the appeal process now, so they've granted us stay. Is there any anticipated timeframe on when our next step is?
I have not received that.
On pause.
Yes, we are on pause.
We can, we can get pricing and be prepared for when that drops. Or at least have a budget estimate. I mean, it's easy enough to get a budget estimate.
Cause we'll need to know what kind of costs we're talking about.
Sure, getting that budget estimate, that will then help to tell us whether we do have to put out for bid or not, which would be a different step completely.
Okay. So then what I'm hearing you say, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would um, you would like it to be done from the district level to start finding out what the costs could potentially be? Rather than working through M S A on this piece of it?
Is that something that you feel is feasible?
Well.
Staff can do?
I haven't done it, but I don't know why we wouldn't be able to. I think we would still talk with Phil because Phil Kreisel, as part of this for their guidance as to what the steps and such are, but just say, you're not gonna be responsible for that part of it. You're giving us our information, we will take it from there. I don't think they just completely wash their hands of it. But I don't put it completely in their decision making process either then. So go ahead and work with him and let him know that, um, yes, we were interested in moving forward, but we are going to um, as far as bidding process and all of that, they do not have to prepare that for us at this time. Is that what I'm hearing? I just wanna be really clear, what my to do is.
That's, that's my end. I, I, like I said, economically, I think we can make this much more feasible if we, if we take that on ourselves.
And of course, I can bring it back next month with more information and, and answer those questions for you. Especially as to bidding process, what we're required to do, et cetera.
Do you still want an action? Do you still want an action?
I, I don't believe we need an action at this point, it's written, "Consider approval," but if you're giving me the directive to follow through, I can go ahead and do that, and it could be considered for action next meeting, if that would be a more thoroughly prepared process, I would say.
Yes.
If you're comfortable with that. Okay, great.
Okay, next, we move to the school fours, CAM3 update.
Again, this, this update is brief, but it, it was a pleasant surprise, I provided for you, that we did, I should say, the attorneys for our insurance company with Mr. Stadler did file an appeals and, to the decision that was made, and it was accepted, so right now it is in stay until it is being looked at, it is under consideration, all of the reasons listed why it should be appealed and considered for further than it was with the, with the case back in June, were listed in the seventeen-page document. I think that's at least a very good piece of footing to have right now. Ultimately, our vision right now and, and our, our focus is, why are we being required to continue with litigation on a project that we are not undertaking? That, that is what we're contesting, not all of the extraneous stuff, we're contesting or being forced into this. So, that is what is being looked at and advised, it will not be completed by the thirty-first of July, which is when that other case was going to be done, so we are in a holding pattern until we hear what comes next.
Any questions or concerns regarding that item? All right, hearing none, we'll move to the final enrollment for 2023-24.
Okay, great, and thank you, Nikki, for preparing this. Every year, we do a final enrollment summary for you. Our total students enrolled ended up at five-ten, incoming open enrolled were seventy-five, outgoing open enrolled were sixty-eight, special education students ninety-six, and students attending RVA were four. And then on the next page, there is a breakdown for you to look at what grade levels and what schools saw the draw or the, the leave coming in or going out. Any questions on that? This is something I try to keep you updated on throughout the school year, this is just like the finalized final numbers.
What was, I'm blanking on what we were, what were we at, or what were, were we expecting? Wasn't it closer to the five hundred mark?
With the total enrolled students?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it, this is a little bit, I think, more of an uptick from the beginning of the year, Caleb, is it?
It is, it is an increase, but remember, enrollment is an FTE.
Right.
So, when we give the FTE numbers, that's usually right around five hundred, and that's because we can only count four K as half a student.
Right.
Phil, what does WIA go by? Do they go by actual or, or FTE?
Actual enrollment.
So, what does this do to?
I have to look it up.
Yeah, be interesting, see where we're gonna be at.
Pretending to just.
Might be something to be, might be, well, there's a few sports that I know are close, so it might be just something to be, to prepare yourself for, I guess, or.
We definitely.
Yeah.
We're always pleased to see that there's more incoming than outgoing, but again, I think as, as the board has learned and through our investigation every year, there's, there's not one reason, there's so many reasons why parents choose to either come in or to go out, and that's just kind of a moving target that all districts work with, and.
Motion purport.
Uh, we don't need them to make a motion, that's just a report.
That's, that's, I'm gonna say. Okay.
I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Yep, nope, that's just a report.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move next, spring sports report.
Yes, ma'am, start out with baseball alphabetically. We had sixteen players overall, three players were from Phelps, had lots of injuries this year. They actually battled back to a thirteen-seven overall record, won a regional championship in the process, so it was a pretty successful year. We had, for all conference, we had Cruz Melton, first team, LJ Terlizzi, second team, Carter Flannery, second team, Josh Cogar was second team as well, so overall, pretty successful baseball season. Moving to golf, we had fourteen participants at the high school level, one from Phelps, had a second-place conference finish to Leona Wavido, where he had a regional championship at Bass Lake, where we won, twenty-eight strokes separated us from the next team.
Wow.
So, it was one of those days where we're, us were falling, for sure. All-conference, Ian Mao was MVP, first-team all-conference captain and academic all-state. Grayson Polcaster, most improved first-team all-conference academic all-state. Trayton Fogarty got second-team all-conference. Levi Lurbe, academic all-state. Tyler Kimberly Keating made academic all-state. Soccer had fifteen participants, for girls soccer, one from Phelps. They had an eight, five, and one overall record, there were quite a few games that didn't get made up because of the wonderful weather that we had to endure. We lost in the regional to Pines, zero to six, we had no all-conference because we are not in currently in a soccer conference, so. Softball, thirteen players overall, one from Phelps, we had a fourteen-and-seven overall record, second place, well, we tied for second place in the conference. We had all-conference players, were Kaya Zeus, first team, Lily Gleason, first team, Ella Spears, second team, Jenna Erickson, second team, Haley Barnetow, honorable mention, Cassidy Williams, honorable mention. Last but not least, track and field, had sixteen participants, eleven boys and five girls, we had one girl from Phelps. Boys were conference champions, the girls, we had all-conference girls, Brooke Newman, Kaylee Grass, and Summer Ridgway, and Kaylee, from Phelps, was the NLC pole vault conference champion, so that was pretty cool. All-conference boys, Connor Hanneman, Ethan Portrikis, Jesse Kleinhans, Nolan Walz, Toby Wolken, Tyler Janikowski, who was the NLC Field Athlete of the Year, and Zach Weavers. And as you know, we had two participants at state, Tyler Janikowski and Toby Wolken, both of them, well, field events, high jump, long jump, triple jump, so, pretty good spring considering the weather and whatnot.
Thank you, Phil. Next, we move to district-related positive happenings.
We had the Fourth of July float, we had a good turnout for it, a lot of kids on the boat this year, and it went well. Oh, wait, we're last. Say, I think, I said Badger Girl last time, right? That was before?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay. And then there's alls, Justin?
What?
Coaches Association football.
The all-state game?
Yep, this Friday. And then we have soccer.
Toby's, is it next week? We have four, we have four players representing us, which is unheard of for school, their size on the, I've got them now for the state football game, Toby for the state soccer game, so it's five from the fall season.
I stole my happenings, sorry.
I was prompted, I was prompted.
I think I'm all done.
What was the Nicolay thing?
We can share that.
I think you should.
Okay.
Go for it.
Kind of a surprise, it's in the works right now, but, and you can help me too. Nicolay College contacted me, Heather Shalock, on Monday, and let us know that every year they do an award, you know, the Friends of Nicolay, it's basically people that, or organizations that have collaborated with them, and it's mutually beneficial, and you have to be nominated, and we were nominated by Sarah Gruber, and after their committee went through everything they've chosen through, like, school district as their organization to honor, and I just got a message back from her this afternoon, for a brilliant idea by Mr. Zeus. It's, it's a big deal with getting the recognition and media and such, and we asked that they would present at, I asked if they could consider presenting at the next school board meeting on the twenty-first, they're trying to make that happen, that they would come to us and then bring the award here, for you and for, it's really important that Ryan Bach is part of it, Justin is part of it, that staff, especially our teaching staff that is working, gets this, because I see this as a big deal, you know, I was very, very honored and, and excited for us, so, yeah, good stuff, even more to come, so we're doing things, little school doing really big things, which is awesome.
Wow. I attended the Three Lakes Athletic Hall of Fame banquet, and that's, that was amazing, Jen was there to take some pictures, too, great turnout, they inducted a cross-country team, a coach, and two athletes from the past, yeah, really neat event.
Anything else? Okay, next, we move on to WASB correspondence and updates.
The only thing I would have is a reminder, if our CISA representative has not yet received their information for.
I did.
You did?
Yes.
Well, then, that wraps up.
Yep, I'm registered.
Get that on the schedule, we're good to go.
Yes, August fifth.
That would be it, August fifth, right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, seconded by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.